The next items we have, actually, we have one item for individual consideration, then we move to the zoning items, so let's bring up item number four.
Item four A is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of obligations collectively, the obligations designated as City of San Antonio Texas Electric and Gas Systems revenue obligations in one or more series in an aggregate amount not to exceed $500 million. Item four B is a resolution in support of protecting CPS Energy customers from unlawful, illegitimate charges for electricity and fuel.
Eric, is that over to you for presentation?
Yes, sir, I'll introduce it. So we have two requested actions as part of item number four this morning. Item four A, as the clerk just read, will authorize CPS Energy to access additional cash for liquidity purposes of up to $500 million. To be clear, if approved by the council this morning CPS will not be going out and issuing $500 million in debt. Rather, this item provides authorization to access this liquidity if it is ultimately needed by CPS Energy. And Gary Gold, CPS's chief financial officer, will be making that presentation on item four A. Item four B is a resolution in support of CPS Energy in its efforts to protect its customers from excessive charges for electricity and fuel. Andy will be making that presentation, further describing the resolution. So we'll start off with Gary and end up with Andy. And let me hand it over to Gary Gold, the CPS chief financial officer. Gary?
Good morning. Can you hear me? Yes, all right. Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Gary Gold. I'm the chief financial officer and treasurer for CPS Energy. And first of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to be able to present today. As we get into the presentation, and you're going to hear much about this, this is related to our continued commitment to fight for our customers. This request today is very much related to that effort. You know, we continue our efforts related to suspending disconnects, as well as helping our customers with resources to pay their bills. And today, this request will continue our discussion about fighting the excessive charges associated with last month's winter weather event. The item that we're presenting today is our short-term financial strategy. And within that strategy is a line of credit that will be available to help us, you know, continue our operations and continue on our efforts for protecting our customers. If you would move to slide two, the agenda, I want to highlight again, our focus on protecting our customers. We'll cover a brief overview of the February 2021 winter event, look at the financial impacts and the impacts on liquidity, talk through our short-term financial strategy, and then respectfully request approval for this additional short-term financing with different banks, consortium of banks. Moving to slide three. As I mentioned, this is really all about protecting our customers, and that protecting our customers is the key to this strategy. As we have put together the estimate of costs associated with the event from February, and we'll look at that later in the presentation, what we really want to do is make sure that we're challenging any unlawful, unconscionable, or illegitimate costs associated with that event. Through that process, we want to ensure that we are also executing and using prudent business tools that create this additional liquidity and provide us the flexibility to execute on this plan. We're taking decisive action to mitigate these costs and protect our customers from the 2021 winter storm event. Next slide. So just a quick overview about the winter event. What we wanted to show here is really the significant prolonged effect that we saw from that winter event in February. During that time, we had sustained temperatures below freezing for five straight days, which broke a record from 1959. What made this event even so, so much more unique is not only the intensity, but the duration. We saw temperatures below freezing and even in the teens for extended periods, which is something that is really not typical for Texas and especially for San Antonio. And when that event occurred, that extreme cold drove high demand for both energy and natural gas. Moving to slide five. This slide is designed to show the requests that we got from ERCOT during that period to shed load, or simply to say for the outages that we had to implement during that time period. This is something that doesn't happen very frequently. This slide shows that going back to 1989, there's only been four other times where those requests to shed load have occurred, the last being in 2011. And you can see that this particular event here in last February was really the significant amount of load that we were requested by ERCOT to shed. It was five times what we saw from the 2011 event. And during that time, during much of this event, prices that ERCOT had, you know, that we saw in ERCOT for power reached $9,000 per megawatt hour, when typically you might see prices in the neighborhood of about $30 or $40. Prices were at $9,000. Moving to slide six. Additionally, we saw increases in natural gas prices. And natural gas is so important for the heating of homes for our customers here in San Antonio, for fueling our power plants, which provide the electricity for our customers. There was a significant need for natural gas. In fact, the amount of gas that we were utilizing during that period was, were record amounts. And right before that event, in the days leading up, we saw gas prices at a normal level of about $3. But as we moved into the event, we saw gas prices moving past $100, past 200, and even up to $400 and $500 per MMBtu, which really represents about a 16,000% increase in the price of natural gas. Moving to slide seven. So as a result, we incurred some additional costs associated with the increase in prices for both power and natural gas. But our focus first and foremost is going to be on what we can do to reduce those costs for the benefit of our customers. And we're actively pursuing multiple options as part of our strategy, whether it's through policy initiatives, or looking at options that might be available from the legislature, where there may be legislation that could provide some funding for the benefit of our customers, pursuing regulatory actions, working with the suppliers to see what we can do in terms of negotiation, and other actions. We're going to pursue all avenues to make sure that we can reduce the estimated cost that we have been communicating that are just over $1 billion. Moving to slide number eight. This provides a little bit of information about those costs. On the right-hand side, you can actually see a breakdown of the costs as we have currently estimated, natural gas at $670 million, and the purchased power at $350 million. On the left-hand side, what we've provided is our current liquidity sources. Currently, we have cash and investments of about $730 million. We also have a flex rate revolving note that provides another $100 million of liquidity, and a commercial paper program, when it's fully available, provides $700 million. Right now, under that commercial paper program, we have available $280 million, and we are in the process of a refunding transaction that we hope to complete here in the next few weeks, that will bring that commercial paper back up to $700 million. In total, if, once we complete that, that total capacity, that liquidity is $1.5 billion. Clearly, you can see that right now, you know, we have the capacity through our liquidity when the commercial paper program is fully available to meet that. Even without the full availability of the commercial paper program, we still have enough in the way of liquidity to meet these costs. But it's also not just about meeting these potential costs, it's also ensuring our ongoing operations. You know, and as I've mentioned, we're only going to pay, even though we're estimating the maximum cost of a billion dollars, we're only going to be looking to pay what we consider to be the legitimate and justified costs. Moving to slide nine. Part of our strategy is communication, and it's going to be very proactive, and we want to make sure that our communication is very transparent with our customers. We also know how important it is to be, you know, be transparent in working with the city, providing information, being collaborative, and so that is going to be a critical component of our communication strategy as well. And we definitely appreciate everything that the city has done to support us through this. We've been working with the credit rating agencies. We've had numerous conversations with them, as well as our banks regarding the impact to CPS Energy, and what we're looking to try to do from a longer-term strategy. And with the investment community, we have been providing material event notices that have kept them informed on what we're saying. And as I said, we're really committed to providing that proactive and continued communication to our customers and to all of our stakeholders. Moving to slide 10. So I talked a little bit previously about our short-term financial strategy and activating the tools that we already have approved by the board and by the city council, including the $100 million flexible rate revolving note. We are in the process of refunding the $420 million of commercial paper that is outstanding that had been previously approved. That would bring us back up to $700 million. And we'll use that commercial paper as needed to help with the funding of these costs as we get those, as we work through those costs. This new tool that we are respectfully requesting approval for today is additional liquidity of $500 million with a consortium of banks that we would utilize only if needed to help us with additional liquidity as we work through and try to resolve these costs and make sure that we have what's available for our continued operations. Moving to slide 11. This just provides a look at our current debt portfolio on the left-hand side with our current tools. You know, outstanding debt, our outstanding debt is currently just under $5.8 billion. The liquidity capacity that we have available currently, as I mentioned, when our commercial paper is fully available, is $700 million, along with the $100 million of the flex rate revolving notes. This additional liquidity that we're requesting today would provide an additional $500 million of capacity for us to be able to utilize if needed. Moving to slide 12. So today, respectfully, we're requesting approval for the establishment of a short-term financing with a bank or consortium of banks to be executed within the next 12 months. The amount we're requesting is up to $500 million. During this initial term, this is interest-only, the cost associated with this liquidity tool would be covered under our existing budget. And as I've noted, this additional liquidity will only be accessed if needed, with the council's approval that would provide us, provide the CEO or other designated officers with the authority to execute this financing obligation. And so with that, I want to say again, thank you for the opportunity to present today.
Thank you very much. Gary, we'll go to discussion. We'll start with council member Andrew Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gary. The one question that I have is, when will we have the actual and legitimate cost analysis back?
So that is, that is ongoing. We're working through that to validate all of the costs that we have received. But also, as I mentioned, what we're doing is pursuing all avenues, whether it's legislative, negotiation, what we can do to reduce those costs. That will take us some time to work through those, those different avenues. And as we have that information and have those final costs, we can definitely make sure that we're communicating that will be part of our strategy.
And Gary, do we know exactly how much natural gas made it to the city of San Antonio? As we know, some of our lines were frozen.
I mean, what I can, you know, what I saw that was available that those days, you know, we were burning probably about 33% more natural gas on those days than we normally burn. You know, typically, we use about, about 500,000 or 600,000 MMBtu's, but we were seeing numbers well above that, which are records for us.
Gary, if I could join into that comment, ma'am, I will, I do want to assure you that we ordered as much gas as we could get, and in some cases, it wasn't enough to keep the plants fully running at full capacity, or it in some ways affected our natural gas systems. So we did reconcile and took a significant adjustment off of what we committed to for gas that was not delivered. Initially, the cost was in the 840 or 840 million, but we got it down below 700 million, and now we're about 670 million. And a good portion of that is because they did not deliver all the gas that we asked for.
Thank you so much, Ms. Paula. Thank you, Gary. I'm turning it back over to you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Andrew Sullivan. Before we take up the motion, let's go ahead and have Andy give his presentation on the remaining elements of item four, and then we'll take up action. Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is item four B, which is in conjunction with the liquidity that Gary just went over. The reason we have this resolution is to make it very clear to the community that although CPS is taking prudent steps in terms of their finances to deal with the challenge, that in no way diminishes their resolve to protect the ratepayers of the city, to ensure that we're not paying illegitimate or illegal costs. So we wanted to reinforce with the community that these two go hand in hand, that the council fully supports CPS's plan, and they have a multifaceted plan to protect our residents from the financial impacts. And as Gary mentioned, that plan includes legislative, negotiation, public awareness, and as needed, litigation. We do want to stress that CPS stands ready to pay legitimate costs for what occurred over the storm, but will continue to fight against illegitimate and unconscionable costs, and that the liquidity measure is a precautionary measure that CPS is taking. Next slide, please. Also, the resolution, it does, the council does say that they're calling upon the city staff to continue working with CPS on the implementation of their plan to protect customers. And I have to say that their team has kept myself, Ben, Eric, and other staff members, as needed, very much in the loop as that plan is developed and as that plan is implemented. And we will be updating council as we take key steps in terms of implementing that plan. But we will continue to coordinate and work with CPS on this plan to protect our customers. We will also work with them to see if there's any additional measures to help protect the customers. There may be things that, again, as the facts present themselves, things are very fluid, but as new tools may appear for the toolbox, we certainly will try to identify those and integrate them into the plan. We also want to place CPS in a position so that on a long-term basis, they can continue to deliver affordable energy to our customers. So part of the plan, there's a short-term element, there's a long-term element, but always with the idea of sustaining their ability to provide relatively inexpensive energy to our customers. Next slide. Part of our plan, as I mentioned, is the state delegation will work with Jeff, I forgot to mention him, is another key member of our city team, working with Jeff to try to advance legislation that will comprehensively resolve the situation we've seen with illegitimate and unconscionable costs. We have seen some movement. Frankly, it's not been a comprehensive solution to it. We will continue to push for a comprehensive solution for not only the immediate problem in terms of the illegitimate and unconscionable prices, but we will also look toward what long-term changes we can make to both the system and the process and the law, so that we are in a much better position, the state is in a much better position to face another storm like this. And we will provide, again, these regular updates to the council and to the community. Next slide, please. We try to keep everything up to date. We're going to add this resaddle to the resolution. Councilman Perry, thank you for reminding us that recently, the Texas Railroad Commission stated publicly that it is their view that they have no jurisdiction over natural gas pricing. Obviously, in a situation like this, if you're not working toward a solution, you're part of the problem. And so we are calling upon all state entities that have anything to do with both gas, provision of gas and electricity, to step up and working together, try to resolve what is, again, a very chaotic situation we're facing right now. And with that, that's all the slides. Again, the resolution is very much tied to the liquidity matter in that it reinforces the resolve to continue fighting these illegitimate and illegal costs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. And let me turn it back now to council member Andrew Sullivan to finish her discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Andy, for that resolution information, and thank you, Councilman Perry, for bringing that forward, because that leads me to the next question, and is, that is, during a declared disaster, is there no price cap? Or do they just decide to charge whatever they feel is best for those companies? Because it looks like there was no price cap, and it just escalated.
Ma'am, on the, on the purchased power side, I mean, we produced, our plants were up over 85% of the time, but we did have challenges. 85% of the time, we were able to cover our load, but we did have to, at key times during the storm, purchase power. And when we were able to supply enough power for San Antonio, sometimes we sold. But overall, we were net buyer. On the, on the purchased power side through ERCOT, there is a cap. There's like two levels of cap. One is $9,000. And, but the comment that Gary made is, the normal price of power is only $30 a megawatt hour. So when the prices are allowed to get up to 9,000, that that's almost a 30,000% increase. So while there was a cap, it was extremely high. And it was designed for summer peaks, which typically only lasts a day or part of a day. In this storm, ERCOT let, and decided to take the market to the cap, and then they held it for multiple days. So that, in essence, was a cap, but it was so high, it caused tremendous pressure on all of Texas and San Antonio. But there's also a segment, it's a special segment of the power market, that is called ancillary services. And this is where there's an absolute commitment to deliver your capacity to the market. Those prices went from over 9,000 a megawatt hour to above $25,000 a megawatt hour. So in this case, yes, it was a cap, but it was never stress-tested. It was a systemic failure in the way the market was designed, not ever anticipating that when you hold it to those levels, it ends up in a huge implication to customers. There was no, there was no thought that in the end, customers pay these bills. So that's that case. In the case of the fuel purchases from the oil and gas industry, there was none. Absolutely none. And so we, we saw during a declared emergency, this let the market ride. And in reality, every utility across the state was just fighting to get fuel to keep people warm, just fighting. And that fight, that fight for people ended up being this bidding up and bidding up, and there was no intervention, no consideration from the broad industry. There were some players that saw it, saw the pressures and the concerns to keep people warm, and they moderated their offers to us. But many did not.
Okay. Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Mayor. Those are all of my questions at this time.
Thank you, council member Andrew Sullivan. Council member Perry.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to remind everybody that we do have this emergency preparedness committee going on right now, and it'll be aired again tomorrow at 10 o'clock. So if anybody wants to watch that, just tune on in to TVSA and watch this whole thing. And there's lots of questions still remaining out there, and we'll, we'll continue working that with CPS SAWs. And don't forget the city as well, because we had a hand in this, this whole situation ourselves here at the city level. But having said that, Paula, any idea where this 9,000 came from? I mean, is that, was that just a number they pulled out of the air? Or was there some consideration why it was set at 9,000, the cap?
That is part of the standard design. It has been in effect for years. It was much lower, probably not quite half, you know, I think before 2010. They increased it in an effort, they thought, to incent utilities to keep putting more capacity on the grid. But again, clearly, it was not stress-tested for how long can that price be held?
Okay. So I still don't understand why 9,000 and why it was increased. Did we ever get up to the, the level that it was before, before they increased it?
Yes, yes, sir. For years, that has been the, the price cap. And we, at San Antonio, we have both paid that level and received compensation at that level, and that kind of has been reflected in our wholesale sales book. But again, overall, our typical peaks happen in June, July, August, and September, and they're usually not more than a couple of hours, part of a day at a time. So usually, it is not a big impact to Texas, not a big impact to San Antonio. It just, nobody thought about what happens when you hold it day after day after day.
Okay. So it's a double whammy, it, both the duration and the level that they had set it as, the upper limit. So, yeah, okay, I understand that. You know, I'm disappointed in what's going on at the state right now. It's one of these pointing fingers type of thing as to who's responsible for this. And I don't think the state is providing that leadership, if you will, to say, okay, here's what we're going to do, and here's, here's what we're going to put forward, and we're going to take care of that. But that hasn't happened yet. I hope that it still happens. We still have a long way to go in the legislation process, but we'll have to wait and see what comes out of that. But having said that, let's go back to slide seven. But having said that, let's go back to slide seven. Okay. Okay, the 1.02, I've heard ranges anywhere from 800 million to 1 point. Now we're seeing 1.02 billion. What's the real number here? I see you have it added up there, but I've heard 800 million to now we're over a billion. So which number is correct?
So the billion is the total. And I will tell you that from the day that we started tallying the total, we've, the number has fluctuated, but it's pretty much stayed at the billion, above the billion level. The components of what we have now are, it's just below $700 million for the fuel, the natural gas element. And the balance of it, about 365 million of it is power, the purchased power. So those are the two components that get us above a billion dollars.
Okay, all right. The, I think Councilwoman Andrew Sullivan touched on it a little bit, but what, I mean, we should have some figure out there on what our, we keep talking about we'll pay the legitimate costs, but what do we consider the legitimate costs here?
Yes, sir. That's a great question. What we have done, and we have a consultant that we have engaged, and we asked them to go in and look at what's happened. We've also asked them to go look at what has happened during other disasters because we've never seen anything like it. And we wanted an expert in this area to do that. So I don't have that final number now. And that's the, when we get that number from the consultant, we will share it with you. But it is a fraction of these prices that we've seen, $400 or $500. And to your point, sir, you know, if you think about natural gas per se, it's probably, it's not the exact same, but if you thought about it like at the gas tank, at the pump. And, you know, let's assume gas is about three bucks. What we ended up with is a gallon of gas instead of costing three bucks, it's probably costing somewhere between 350 to, you know, starting to approach $400 a gallon. And so then you fill up your tank and then you're going to pay $6,000 to $7,000 for a tank of gas. And that's why we think this is so egregious. Now, we do think $3 is the average price for normal pricing. We do understand that there was a storm and there was some scarcity associated, quite a bit of scarcity. It was cold. But there in no way should we see prices of this level. But I need to get the consultant to give us that. We need that as part of our strategy. And assuming as we have that, we'll make that available publicly.
Any idea about the timing of when you're going to get that?
I anticipate to have it no later than next week.
Okay, great, great. So how many outstanding bills do we have in San Antonio right now? Or the customers that are not paid to CPS? How much are we talking about?
Are you now talking about just the normal pandemic disconnect? Gary, can you chime into that? I don't have the count.
The last count that I saw, we had about, I believe, 70,000 customers. And when you aggregated the dollars associated with that, as of the end of January, we were at past due balance of $93 million. That were more than 30 days past due.
Okay. And this might be an Alex Lopez question here, but aren't we supposed to be covering utility bills with the CARES Act funding? And follow-on assistance funding to people? Aren't we supposed to be covering those costs to those that can't afford it?
Yeah, Councilman, I'll jump in and answer that. As part of our emergency housing assistance program, we do cover utility expenses. And the last amount that I saw that we had spent just under $6 million during the course of the existence of our housing program towards utilities, the vast majority of that was to CPS.
Okay.
Councilman, with respect to the grants program, the grants that were provided to the micro businesses were allowed to be provided, to be used for whatever purpose they needed. So it could have been rent, could have been employees, could have been PPE, and it also could have been utilities. It was their choice.
Well, are there different categories of people that have not paid their CPS bills? Do we know what those categories are? And have we evaluated that at all? I'm talking about those that can't afford it and they just haven't paid, those that can't afford it and haven't paid. And are there any other categories in there that we have evaluated at all?
Sir, I'll try to start this off and see if Gary has anything to add. We have, the majority of the accounts that have not paid are residential. We do have some commercial, more the small businesses that have struggled, but the majority have been in the residential arena. And when we do look at it, it seems to be all over San Antonio, not just in one area. I, we continue to promote it, particularly through our affordability programs and, you know, discount programs. I don't think we have yet indicated who's on one of our programs. And that way, that's how we know their qualifications. But that is something that we were going to do. Now, Gary, maybe you have better information than I do.
No, Paula, you're right. The majority of customers are residential. We are, we are working, Rudy Garza's team is working with an outreach to our customers to help them get on payment plan programs or to find assistance. But I think he would tell you also that there were customers that we have not been able to get in touch with just for whatever reason. But many customers that we have reached out to have been very appreciative of our efforts to work with them and help them with assistance or payment plans.
Okay, that's the end of my time at this point. I'll chime back in. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry and Councilmember Pauli.
Thank you. Paula, you know, today, we're going to be making sort of an up or down vote here to extend, you know, the liquidity that you need or not. What happens if we say no?
I think, I always understand that the council has absolutely the right to say yes or no. And I also understand that the obligation for potential debt, I mean, we're not taking out the capacity at this time, is a serious responsibility of management, of the board, and of the council to make sure that we're prudent and frugal. And just like, this is absolutely the council's authority to say yes or no to this. I understand that this is a very hard ask. There are entities in Texas that are failing because of this event. There are entities that are going bankrupt. There are customers that are being abandoned and told, given huge $6,000, $10,000, $20,000 bills, huge bills, and then those companies are going bankrupt. There are a lot of companies that don't have the strength of a city like San Antonio, the diligence associated with managing the system and being prudent with finances as the anchor in the city of San Antonio had, you know, prudently bought CPS Energy 78 years ago. And CPS Energy has been able to augment and align to the city's great example. We have been in the top-rated utilities, investor-owned, municipals, and co-ops throughout our history. And we are in fact, very frugal. And we in fact, have managed through really difficult times, nuclear and the pandemic and many other challenges that have occurred. What the financial community expects, I believe, out of San Antonio is to think about this very, very prudently and think about the practical ramifications of managing on a go-forward basis, working through this issue, being prudent, paying what's appropriate, but being prepared, always being prepared to have the right financial tools to support operations, the right financial tools to keep and build confidence with our counterparties that we're going to figure out the best way to move forward. And all this additional tool does is reinforce the fact that we've thought this through extensively. And we have creditors who actually have always thought that San Antonio and CPS Energy have been a worthwhile credit risk, a worthwhile investment. They can expect that we will meet our commitments and obligations. This puts pressure, but the plan is the cities. The plan is San Antonio. The plan is to make sure we do all we can to get back to a normal where people can rely on reliable power and affordability of bills. And even when we are sometimes faced with monumental, humongous barriers to that, San Antonio has always found a prudent way to work through it, work through it aligned with our council, work through it aligned for the benefit of our customers. I will tell you that I believe if we do not get this approval today, it will change the opinion of the financial community that lends San Antonio money, that lends CPS Energy money, and will put in doubt. Because what is the alternative? The alternative is to use up all our resources, pay all our bills, these exorbitant bills, will have difficulty fighting the fight. And the likelihood that we will have the financial resources to continue operations becomes in jeopardy. And while, again, this is a huge burden to do, this is not the first time that our community has been able to fight through these things. So I absolutely believe that if we did not get this approval from you today, we will send the absolute wrong message to all the people and all the entities that have supported our community and that we will not have a great plan and we will fumble. And all CPS Energy is asking for is alignment and support while we prudently work through this issue, keeping you and our community updated and letting you know that this fight is for real.
I get that answer. And there's a lot to unpack there. And, you know, my constituents are not subject men or experts in finance or operating a very sophisticated operation like SaaS or publicly traded companies or anything like that. And so I've been the general counsel of a publicly traded, two publicly traded companies, and I'm hearing exactly what you're saying. But in plain English, what you just told us was if we don't extend this, disaster is imminent. And I'm hearing you say, and you got to correct me if I'm wrong, that if we don't extend this capacity to you guys, that like other companies who are facing the exact same problems without capacity, very bad things, up to and including bankruptcy are on the table. Did I just, did I get that wrong?
We are facing a disaster right now. But if we don't come through with this financing tool, yes, sir, we will face other related implications. And if we can't have access to the financial markets and come through with a plan that works, then we really can't maintain operations. CPS Energy maintains, and we don't mean it to be complicated, we really, really feel like we're supposed to worry about reliability and power and affordability so the average citizen only has to worry about cutting their lights on. But in fact, we borrow a significant amount of money all the time. Somebody is on the other end funding either through the assets that we invest in or through PPAs for renewables that we want to do. There's a financing support of that whole thing. And it's, and again, for example, for the average citizen, this is why you get a car note, because how many people can buy a brand-new car immediately and use these resources? This is why you get a loan for your home, either to buy it or for improvement. You need a great relationship with the financial community because everyday costs, everyday costs are expensive. Solar farms also cost hundreds of millions of dollars. We just work with someone who has that loan. Power plants cost hundreds of millions to billions of dollars. We borrow that money and then we smooth it out over many decades and make it affordable for every single person. But if we get, if we are telling the financial community that we are no longer going to support financial tools that maintain reliability and help us keep up with operations and fulfill our commitment to fight for our community, then it'll make every single entity that has loaned us money before have doubts because the money is to support operations and utilize the tools that help us effectively keep things running. Even though the issue happened in February, we are still working on all the development that is happening across San Antonio. And we are here to support San Antonio as it comes back out of a pandemic. And we have been holding receivables compassionately because we understand that people have lost jobs at all levels of the economy. But oftentimes, the people that need the most, the most help, those things don't happen without utilizing financial tools and financial partners that need to have confidence that the alignment between us and our owner is connected. And when that bond is broken, and then it makes them doubt, how can CPS Energy get through this?
I get that. I get that, Paula. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting you, Paula. I'm on the clock here and the mayor is, makes a slavishly adhere to the countdown. And so with that, I hear your answer. Eric, the answer I just heard is that if we don't extend this capacity today, disaster is imminent. I heard the word bankruptcy. I heard the word interruption of operations. Are you hearing anything different? Do you agree that if we don't extend this capacity today, that, you know, that the consequences for San Antonio are catastrophic?
I do. And I'll just add also that it is in complete alignment with the legal approach that CPS is taking.
Okay. In that case, Mayor, I move for approval.
My second. All right, there was a motion by Pauli as a second by Courage. Did I hear that right, John? You're up.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Mayor. Now, I just want to clarify a few things, Paula, and I appreciate the presentation that we've had from you so far. Obviously, we couldn't control the weather. And so all of this is because of a weather event that was extraordinary, that no one was prepared for, and that obviously, some mistakes were made in dealing with that. But I think a lot of what we're seeing in the way of the effect on CPS Energy in San Antonio were more or less things out of our control. For example, when the PUC said raise the cap to the maximum amount and ERCOT said, okay, you said we can do that, we're going to do that, that opened the floodgates for the rising costs that were way beyond the usual expectations that we would have. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I understand that there was an organization that took a look at all of this after the fact and estimated that ERCOT overcharged or allowed overcharging to the number of about $16 billion. Have you heard about that report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then I understand that there are many businesses, and you've mentioned this, that right now are going out of business, that are going bankrupt because they can't afford to pay the bills they owe. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And I understand that ERCOT is now saying to CPS Energy and all of the other participants in ERCOT that for every company that goes out of business and doesn't pay their bill, that their bill is being passed on to CPS and the other organizations that are staying within ERCOT that aren't going bankrupt, right?
Yes, sir.
So that means we need to pay a share of the bankruptcy of maybe 10 or 20 So that means we need to pay a share of the bankruptcy of maybe 10 or 20 or 30 other businesses in Texas. Is that right?
Well, that is part of our, part of our petition, not to be exposed to that. But that is the current, the current situation that is on the table from ERCOT.
Right. So it is absolutely obvious to me that any legal action that we can take or any legislative action by the state government can really benefit the individuals in our community because CPS is owned by the city of San Antonio and it is owned by the ratepayers. And it is you and I and all of the other people who are going to be paying these bills who need to understand that the action is required for CPS to contest these high charges, particularly from, from ERCOT. Let me ask you this, have we received all of the bills from all of the energy partners that are involved with us due to the event, the weather event?
We have received, we have received the bills, but we have not received all of the adjustments that you were talking about, all of those failures, the implication from failures. We have not received all of those.
Right. I understand that some of the people who supply gas have sent us pretty exorbitant bills. But there are some companies that supply gas that, that retained reasonableness in their billing to us. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it our, our plan to do everything we can to lower the bills from the unreasonable companies?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what we're saying right now is, is we really face a lot of challenges and we don't exactly know how much all of that's going to cost until either the state takes action or we're successful in our actions or not successful in our actions against the gas companies that are overcharging us or ERCOT that wants to overcharge us. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So it's, it's going to be a while before we can assess the total that we may owe. But I understand the idea of maintaining liquidity, that we can continue to operate. For example, if we lost all of our, our challenges and the state does nothing and all of a sudden we need to pay a billion dollars, which I think is not expected. But theoretically, yes, you could pay it. You could take all of your reserves. You could go ahead and finance all of the debt instruments that you have available and you could come up with a billion dollars. But we wouldn't have any money to run the company from day to day after that. Is that correct?
We, um, we would definitely be taking on a ton of, a ton of extra debt. And this capacity will leave us with a working amount if we can handle it, but it would be tighter. And that's, and that, that capacity would help us in that really dire situation. But, but it would still be workable from there.
Would you be able to pay the city its 14% share of 25 or 30 million dollars a month if that was to take place?
Yes, sir. I believe we would be able to do that. Now, we would have to come back to you, though, with an updated long-term financing plan to make sure that everything is covered, which is basically taking whatever that final bill is and then trying to find the best way to reduce it down to a small impact to customers overall and include all of the normal operating costs, including city payment.
So what you're saying, if you had to pay that, you couldn't really operate without coming back to the city and increasing even more debt in order to pay that?
I'm not sure.
To pay your operations.
I'm not sure we would end up increasing much more debt. We would just end up taking it long-term. So these are, these are short-term, this, this one is a short-term instrument, probably one to five years. And just in capacity, I really believe that we have to resolve this issue this year. But in the design, we would, we would try to think about it in terms of making sure it covered enough of our timeframe. What we would need to do is come back to you and take that, all of that borrowing and try to take it over maybe 20 years, again, to make it affordable.
But we'd still, the, the organization would pay out a billion dollars and then incur hundreds of million dollars of debt long-term to continue operations? Okay. Well, it seems to me it's, it's better for us to address the concerns the way that you're proposing to face them right now and try and beat down those unreasonable, exorbitant charges and then see where we lie. And to have the flexibility to go to the market and get additional funding if we need it, I think is a smart move to make, which is why I've seconded this motion. I think there's still more to understand. There are obviously not only state mistakes, but there were local mistakes. There are some things that, that we did that we need to do better. We need to make sure it don't happen again. And the mayor's committee is looking at that, and I know that your board is looking at that. And so I think that we will look to make sure we can do all we can to prevent this from happening again. But we need to depend on whatever agency manages our energy grid, whether it's ERCOT or something else that comes about or the Public Utility Commission. We need to make sure that they do their job to ensure the integrity of our energy system. And, and I think that's what's at stake right now. And so I, I appreciate how you've explained things and presented things. And I hope that we come up with some local solutions that will continue to allow us to provide the great service that both our utility companies do. And, and so I appreciate your coming before the council today and, and clarifying all this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Courage, Councilmember Viagra.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Courage, for all of your questions that you, you asked. They were very good at clarifying the situation that we're here and, and helped answer some of my questions that I had. When it comes to 4B, the resolution in support of protecting CPS Energy customers from unlawful illegitimate charges for electricity and fuel, I think absolutely we are all 100% on board with that because of, for my reasoning, and one of the things I said prior to was, I believe this system that we are set up in is already set up rigged against us, the ratepayer at the state level. Because, and we need accountability. We need accountability of ERCOT. We need accountability of state leadership and state representation. We need that accountability, not just the city, but all of the ratepayers and all of the citizens of residents of Texas. And when it comes to A, 4A, it has been helpful to hear the clarification that was done here. But I have to say, you know, you were mentioning things, you were mentioning, Paula, about, you know, the, the agencies or the, the companies or others who are dealing in the market. If we don't have this liquidity, they maybe, maybe have doubts, et cetera, in this. You know, many of the residents of San Antonio have doubts right now about what's happening. And many of us trusted CPS Energy to have the lights on. And we, again, are trusting you with this because we want the end result to be that we are not going to be burdened with these ridiculous price gouging that is happening on this market. I am grateful that there are, well, I mean, I think it's just good business that we didn't have some of these companies gouging us. But they are, but they are doing their due diligence. But to the point of, we still don't know what an appropriate cost is. I want to make sure that we have that appropriate cost and we get those numbers as soon as we can because there is still a lot of hurt, a lot of angst. I know you know this, but it, it has to be said here because the residents want accountability from us, the council members who appoint the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. And we need to make sure that we have that accountability. So we need to have protection for our ratepayers. Those are my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viagra and Councilmember Sandoval.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Paula. I feel that you and your team and our legal team have done a very thorough job of preparing this item to, to come forward. I think we've spoken on, on more than one occasion on it. I, I believe the, the double package of, of this credit line request along with this resolution make, makes sense. And I, I want to congratulate you and Andy and your team for, for working so hard on that. And I feel very confident with this vote that I'll be casting in, in support of both of these items. I, I will take the opportunity, however, to mention a, a few things for the benefit, not just of my colleagues, but of the public who may be, who may be watching this. So I'm part of the Committee on Environmental Preparedness that the mayor has formed to review the event. And I, I want to thank you, Paula, for assigning a part of your staff to support the work of the committee. And I want to assure my colleagues that many of the questions you are asking today are on our list of our fact-finding questions that we are also going to be submitting to, or have submitted to CPS for, for responses so that we can understand what happened. Among these types of questions are, you know, did we receive all the gas or all the fuel that we had anticipated? If not, why not? And we'll go into that. So those are there. Those questions are available online for those of you who may want to view them. I'd be happy to have my staff send them to you. And if there are additional members that, questions that council members have, that members of the public have, please feel free to send those to the committee. There is an online way to, to submit those. Uh, thank you very much, Ben, for, for creating those, those portals. I want to also highlight a few things that you said, Paula, in terms of how we got to this terrible situation that we're in and the terrible events of, of last month. And first, I think what you said was there was a, a failure of this market design that hadn't been stress-tested. And unfortunately, it was tested with us, right? With our own residents across the state and with our own taxpayer dollars. And that is tremendously unfortunate that this experiment is being played out with real money that belongs to real people. So I expect us to see, I expect to see our city and hopefully CPS as well being very active during the legislative session in terms of what, what we, what it'll take to put us in a better position. And I have no doubts that, that our team will do a good job on that. The other reason we're here is because there was simply price gouging. There was people trying to make a profit and, you know, as much has been said on, in the news outlets on that. There is also a failure to prepare for extreme weather and that perhaps is a failure of the regulatory framework and something that I would all also like to see taken up by our legislative team. But also locally, I think it's definitely a discussion that we can have. It doesn't come for free, obviously, but we saw that there, that we pay for it in, in some way or other, right? If we don't prepare. But what we're not talking about today, and I, and I get it, it's mildly outside of the scope of this, but I don't want us to forget that what we're also seeing here is more extreme weather and we anticipate seeing more of it. And that is why, that is why I think all of you recognize it and why we are so intent on resolving all of these problems because we know it will happen again. A former council member, and you will all know who I'm talking about, used to say, sure, everyone wants to save the environment until you have to pay for it. Well, well, guess what? We are going to have to pay for it either way, right? And I would rather not put my community through a nearly catastrophic event like the one that we had. But I'd rather pay for it smartly in a way that creates jobs that allows us to adapt and be prepared for, for what's coming. So I want to share with my council colleagues that the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Advisory Committees, which you created by vote not too long ago. We created two committees, an advisory, a technical and community advisory committee, as well as an equity committee, did meet at the beginning of this month. And they have a, a list of issues that they want to prioritize going forward. But after the storm, that aspect or that approach really changed. And they are now going to come forward with adaptation strategies that they think should be, that we should be prioritizing in the face of extreme weather events. So I look forward to, to bringing that to you, either at our committee or, or to the full council. I look forward also to continuing that partnership with CPS. You're, you do have, I believe it's Angela on that team with us. So we want to know how we can work together on adaptation in terms of the CPS side for, you know, a more resilient grid. You have, you have the most reliable grid. There is no doubt about that. And I think now what we're facing is the challenge of resiliency and how do we make sure that we're, that we're able to provide power even in the face of these unexpected events? So those are, those are my comments. And if any of my colleagues want to continue this dialogue offline, I'm very happy to, to talk to you about it. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandoval, Councilmember Trevino.
Thank you, Mayor. I think great, great questions and comments all around. And I do appreciate the situation that we're in. I really only have one question, and it's the one that I think that many people, because we're, we have to remind ourselves, we're still in the middle of a pandemic and there's still a lot of insecurity and anxiety within our, in our community. Paula, if this item is approved, will CPS Energy continue to suspend disconnections and for how long?
Great question. You know, our thought was that this issue, as we're working through it, does not accelerate the decision on the pandemic. We, we really are trying to stay the course of suspending disconnects as the vaccine, vaccinations start to take more and more hold. We want that, we want more of the penetration of the vaccination so all of San Antonio can get back on its feet and the economy can get going. So I think in, in reality, we, we don't have anything happening this spring. But we'll also have to be very, very careful, sure, because we do also understand that, you know, the projections for the vaccine to take hold are in the summer and the summer bills are high. So we're not rushing. We're, we're still trying to work with customers. We're still trying to work with the city and the county on those resources and, and just stay diligent and focused on that and not let this other strategy change our, our plans.
Well, you know, I, I should have really just started by thanking you in the first place for, for suspending disconnects when, when this pandemic started. So I, I, I do appreciate that gesture from CPS. It's, it's gone a long way. SaaS did similar. But just know that, you know, these are the kinds of things that I think are addressing the current emergency that, that, that people are in and are facing every day and is providing more anxiety as they're trying to get, we're all trying to get past this. So I, I would ask that as, as soon as you, you can provide some, some clarity on this, that, that you keep this council informed and the public as well. So thank you for, for suspending the, the disconnects in the first place. And again, I would just advocate that we continue this, at least until we're, we're clearly out of this pandemic. And that maybe there's a, a, a connection to the, the new relief bill that is coming that does address utility assistance that I think can be very helpful in all of this.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your leadership on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Trevino, Councilmember Perry.
Yes, sir. I had some more individual questions on the slides, but I'm, I'm going to forego that because I think there's a part here that I, I want to make sure that I understand correctly. I had one of my colleagues talking about bankruptcy and then another colleague asking a series of questions that indicated, no, if we didn't get this, we could tighten our belts and get through this. So I want to be very, very clear as to what this means. Are we, if you don't get this, are we facing bankruptcy?
Thank, thank you, Councilmen. This is, uh, this is, I'm speaking, Andy. I wanted, in fact, I had our.
Thank you, Councilman. This is honestly Andy. In fact, I had already asked the mayor if I could chime in on that exact issue you just referred to. And to give you context, I think most of the council knows that I lived through a high-profile bankruptcy with my former employer. So whenever that word comes up, I'm very sensitive to it. So like you, I don't want, I don't want the headlines tomorrow to be that CPS is on the verge of bankruptcy because it isn't. I think what Councilman Polias's point, he can correct me if I'm wrong, was that if council doesn't take action, it would take a already challenging situation in terms of CPS having the fiscal strength to deal through this crisis and maintain operations. It may lead to a series of events, right, depending on how things turn out, that could ultimately, you know, get to that point. But we're nowhere near or nowhere close even to the point where that's, you know, right now, an option that's being considered.
Forgive me the interruption. That is 100% correct, Andy. That's what I was trying to accomplish there, was just present a picture of all possibilities. Thanks.
Yeah. And I just want, you know, the way, Paula, you described it, you know, we could tighten our belts and get through until we needed something like this in the future, but in no way are we indicating a bankruptcy situation right now. I just wanted to clarify that for our community and investors out there.
Sure. Great point. I think my, in wanting to answer the questions, that is happening to entities that are not able to come up with plans and resources. The ask that we have for you today is a critical part of the plan that makes sure that we have something that's comprehensive, that's flexible, that allows us, again, to have the comfort of knowing it's there as we press forward and make sure that we come out of this as strong as possible in terms of helping customers. But yes, San Antonio CPS Energy in particular is strong, and this plan is very solid. So that was just a scenario, not where we are today.
Okay, great. I just wanted to put that to bed and rest for our viewing public and for banks and investors and all that, that take care of CPS and the surrounding areas here around the city, as well as the city. So just wanted to make sure everybody understands that very clearly. That's all I had. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. And thank you to our colleagues and staff and CPS for coming forward with what is a prudent measure under very difficult times to emphasize, again, that we are working hand-in-hand with CPS to make sure that we are defending our residents, defending rate payers in San Antonio. Because, again, it would be egregious to allow for the cost of recovery from this disaster to be burdened onto the people who've been suffering from it. So thank you very much, Paula and team, for bringing this forward, and my colleagues for the discussion. There is a motion and a second for Item 4, which is Items 4A and 4B. Without further discussion, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.